Okay, it's June the 10th, 2019. We're ready to start our meeting this morning. Let's stand for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. I have Jimmy say the prayer this morning.
Dear gracious heavenly Father, Lord, I just come to you thanking you, Lord, for many blessings you've given us, Lord. Lord, I just want to lift up our court to you, ask you just to give us the words and the wisdom to do what we need to do for the county, Lord, and for the people in the county. Just ask you just to be with those that are traveling, those that are service men and women, just watch over and take care of them, Lord. Just be with our county and our city and help us to do what is right for everyone. And just ask you just forgive us now while we're faithful in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free and just as one.
All right. Judge Lee's on vacation, should be returning tomorrow with a stack of stuff on his desk. Welcome everybody this morning, and we'll start with number one, public comments and requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with Section 551.042, the Texas Open Meetings Act. So I see nobody's present for that. Let's move on to number two, considering possibly approved minutes from May 24, 2019, special meeting of the Commissioners' Court.
Make a motion to approve the minute.
Got a motion from Commissioner Parker?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on. Number three, consider and possibly approve the audit proposal for the 2018-19 fiscal year by Arnold Walker and Arnold. Says, "Dear service, we understand that you're requesting a quote from the audit services for the years ending September 30th, 2019 to 2020 and 2021. Because of the anticipated retirement of County Auditor Carl Johnson later this year, it is our desire to just give you a quote for September 30th, 2019, audit at this time. We would prefer, "on the future years after a new county auditor is in place and we have had an opportunity to assess that person's skills and knowledge, we would be happy to give a quote on the future years in early 2020. Our estimated quote for the 2019 audit would be $33,025 for the county audit for the year ending September 30th, 2019, and $2,725 for the juvenile probation audit for the year ending August 31st, 2019. We appreciate the opportunity to give you this quote and would be happy to meet with you should you have any questions. Respectfully, Lanny Walker." So, see they just want to do the one year. And, so we're going to do for both bids on both those audits, what's the desire of the court?
I make a motion to approve Arnold Walker and Arnold for the 2019.
I had a motion from Commissioner Parker. Second from Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Stand from voting, this Commissioner Riddle. Item number four, considering possibly approve a subdivision of 2.8333 acres on behalf of Justin Mitchell, and I believe that's in your precinct, Dana. Tell us what you got on that.
We got two flats here, is that right? Yep. Two flats, one point. Just went through a flint yard, checked everything up. One flat. But it's two spots, right? Two tracks. Everything looks like it's up good and everything.
Okay.
Got it all, it's done. I checked it over.
Okay.
Good. I'll make a motion.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Applewhite to approve the flat. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Of course not. Item number six is to consider and possibly approve the purchase of a replacement chipper. Uh, what, five? Oh, I skipped one, sorry. I'm backing up here, back up. Report from Commissioners regarding roadwork status. So, everybody get your notes out. We'll start from Precinct Four and work our way down this time. What you got?
We have been working on County Road 4315, trying to get things ready to seal coat it and all. We've got the tree lines trimmed and all of that, hoping to start here in the next week or so on doing the rest of the roadwork. Only got to put in about six culverts, so hoping to get started on that. But this week, we had a little change of plans. We were planning on starting mowing right of ways today, and we found a 16-inch covert over next to the interstate over on 3140 that was undermined, and we had to have him to pull it. And John is helping us some this week with, or today, hauling some of the concrete and all that to state, give us out there from their yard out there, out there to it. It's such a long, long ways out there. He offered a couple of his trucks and guys to help haul, which we do appreciate that. And they're out there working on that right now, and hopefully by tomorrow, or no later than Wednesday, we'll be through with that, and we will start mowing right of ways probably then.
Sounds good.
I don't know what you got. Been patching quite a bit, and we put in some three culverts. And we got a big cover, 3365, that we're going, it's a 16-inch cover, we're going to have to, as soon as it gets in, we're going to replace it. We're side mowing. Get all the side mowing, we'll start.
All right. Ah, in Precinct Two, we replaced the covert on 2710, and we're working on the base failures all the way down that road so we can get ready to chip seal that. And we're prepping road on, road 2630 at the end of it where it goes into Franklin County. Me and Commissioner Larkin jumper, we're kind of tag teaming that, and we're going, doing about 200 yards right there on the county line on each side of it, and we're going to have that chipped and sealed. And we're going to start on 2720 and 2715, getting the base failures replaced and fixed or chip sealing. And we've been clearing lots of trees. Last two storms came through on 2475. We changed the covert out on 2475 and removed some trees, and we've been patching a lot of roads from the end. Started mowing a little bit on 2315 and doing some side boom mowing on 2475, and we had some problems with our side boom mower. And then hauling concrete with Precinct Four. And a couple of storms, we have a lot of trees in, had some trees went down this weekend. Went out a couple of times this weekend, but it's picked up today. And I'd like to thank Tri-Lake Volunteer Fire Department on that one Saturday night storm. They went out and chased all the roads down out in Blodgett, Moncella, and helped spot out where we had trees down, everything, it was a big help. And I'd like to thank Commissioner Riddle and his men. Last Wednesday, there was a big, big tree went down on County Road 1030, and he got a call to go out there and headed with the crew, and we got there, and the crew from Precinct One, he done got there and taking that baby up. They done had the road cleared out, so they, that was awesome. Appreciate that very much, Commissioner. And that's it. Now we can go to number six. Considering possibly approve the purchase of a replacement chipper used to distribute gravel in the seal coat process. So, Commissioner Riddle.
I still don't have an answer, but listen, between a four-wheel drive and a two-wheel drive.
No, we got a lot of avenues. Good, I do have a question. Have we thought about renting one for six months, through the summer, whatever you call it, summer lease? Whoever calls that. I don't know much about it, I just was asked by somebody that worked at State Highway Department that had done that before. I imagine it's true.
That's a good last.
Go down, let's contact the other building. Let's table that, making a decision on the chipper today till we get some more information and put it back on agenda future date. Need to make a motion to do that? We do, we have a motion. I'll make a motion to table this issue till we get some more information and more pricing and know more about it. Till then, we'll see. Second from Commissioner Riddle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's, they got two, uh, 2005, 2004, now 104.
And that's a kind of a remodel, they go through them, make sure they're working good, so.
Make sure everything's working. That's the only guarantee, so I'm not.
What model is that one we've got now?
It's not on the inventory. It's, Bobby says, the first time he seen it, he bought it from Richie Brothers Auction in the early 1980s.
That's kind of what I thought.
It's a rail machine.
Alrighty then, moving along. Item seven is open and review bids possibly approved for asphalt, sand, cold mix, hot mix, limestone rock, asphalt, high-performance cold mix. And all the bids are together. File here, little bit of everything. Go through all these today. What I, uh, what we were talking about was maybe, we may be missing a few bids.
That would do it, that would serve all of them, about nine.
Yes.
Then, then we, before you even open it, try to go here with this bid.
Asphalt. All right, so going down the line, it's everything we're bidding on from asphalt, concrete culverts, plastic culverts, steel culverts, seal coat aggregate type B grade four, type A flex base ash, and then the regular flex base, and emulsified asphalt, all categories in that, and the lawn care maintenance. Air conditioning maintenance, got one more here. And then tally it up on how they compare to last year's quotes and what's going on? Everybody we bid from sent something in? We'll just take our time and do that now?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Got one from everybody on the list.
So who's the Lawnview Company here that's for hot, cold mix?
Yeah, Lawnview Asphalt, what it is.
So I don't have that Lawnview for anything. Should we just wait and not open those? Don't open that one yet, should we just wait on? Huh? Okay. Okay, we need to contact Lawnview. So don't open it yet and read it, just wait. Okay. On that bid. Plastic culverts, National Wholesale. I got Bergen, I don't see, I got homes I don't have a National Wholesale, so I need to get a hold of them. National, for sure. All right, let me make a list here. No, I won't, they call National Wholesale. Okay. Can't believe National didn't do it because they're so handy for us. National Wholesale, okay, we got that. Do all our culverts. Just need to get a hold of Lawnview. And then we have a couple on lawn maintenance, so really just Lawnview unless overlooked. All right, let's do, we love asphalt bids. Oh, that's right, we're waiting on Lawnview. I don't see a Lawnview. Steve, those two. Those two. Steve, and then, these two. These two, they need to be opened with National Wholesale. Those two need to be opened with National Wholesale.
This is your wheelbase, you're on your wheelbase, right? Your lawn service, what's made of it?
They, he was familiar with it and said they got it, he just hadn't got it to us. Lawnview. Table the asphalt. Yes, number seven. Okay, well, just keep all those together, and we'll, on asphalt, we need to make a motion to table that issue till we get Drake and Lawnview's bids in. So, Commissioner Riddle made the motion. You got a second? Second from Commissioner Applewhite, all approve, say aye. Aye. On item number seven, we'll table that for sure. Concrete culverts, we got two bids in for that.
We got two bids in for you. I've got, I've got the two concrete down here, those.
Okay.
You want to open them?
Yeah, go ahead and open them.
Hey, look at there. Fixing to get it. I see you're gonna use them.
Just need to wait on Lawnview.
Okay, this one from Holmes Concrete here. He sent a, deal here said, "There will be no concrete bid provided for this year. Thank you, David Holmes."
Okay.
Holmes out of Gilman. This public notice he got said that Commissioner, oh, that's the one that we sent, yeah. But that, that's what he, what he's got written on here, handwritten, is says there will be no concrete pipe bids provided for this year. That's from Holmes. Cox Concrete is 12-inch reinforced four-foot section, or $55. 18-inch reinforced four-foot section is $69. And 24-inch reinforced four-foot section is $74.
Yeah, that 12-inch is the same price, 1375 a foot.
Is that the same price as last year?
Yeah, same as last year on the 18. And same as last year.
All of them same?
Yes, sure is.
All three of them?
So on item number eight, approved bids for concrete culverts to Cox Concrete at the same price as it's last year, which is a good deal. We have a motion to accept that bid. I'll make it motion. Commissioner Parker makes a motion, have a second? Second by Dana Applewhite, all in favor, say aye. Aye. And all opposed, it's unanimous. Number nine is plastic culverts. Right here. National Homes in Bergen. On Holmes, last year he was on 12-inch, he was 501, he's 525 this year. On plastic cover, 15-inch, he was 695. This year, last year, 618, so he's gone up a little bit. On 18, it was 950 last year, it's 960 this year. Foot 24-inch, last year was 1539, this year is 1546. 30-inch is 2116. Last year, twenty-one ten. Thirty-six inch. Twenty-eight oh five, last year, it's twenty-eight fifteen, this year. Doesn't do forty-two inch anymore, or sixty inch, has forty-eight inch. Which is, was forty-three fifty last year, it's forty-three sixty-eight this year. So it's slightly increased.
Hey, John, what was the fifteen inch?
Six ninety-five. Bergen's bid. On twelve inch. Last year they were five twenty-nine, and this year they're five fifty-four a foot. On fifteen inch plastic cord, they were seven twenty, now they're seven forty-seven. Eighteen inch, they were ten eighteen, now they're ten twenty-five. Twenty-four inch, sixteen forty-two, now they're sixteen fifty-eight. On thirty inch, they were twenty-two seventy-two, now they're twenty-two eighty-seven. On thirty-six inch, they're thirty-two thirty-three. And they have the forty-two inch, which is forty-three ninety-three. Forty-eight inch is forty-nine ninety-four. And sixty inch is eighty-eight ten, it actually went down in price. Bergen. Then we've got National Wholesale. They, uh, on twelve inch, they're fifteen dollars and fifteen cents. Foot. About four cents.
What was that?
The, the twelve inch. Plastic covert is fifteen dollars and fifteen cents a foot.
Fifteen?
Five dollars, I'm sorry, five dollars and fifteen. Twenty, on a fifteen inch. They are seven dollars and one cent. Eight, eighteen inches, nine dollars and ninety cents a foot. Twenty-four. Is fifteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. Prices are just slightly increased. And then on thirty inch, they're twenty-two dollars and eleven cents. Thirty-six inch is twenty-nine dollars and forty-two cents. Forty-two inch is forty dollars and twenty-five cents. Forty-eight inch is forty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. And the sixty inch is eighty-one dollars and thirty cents. Yes, in the flash. We did these. We have three on here. We bid to accept those bids so we have to, we can go to one of those other companies to get a covert. Is that how that's done? Cause, I mean, some of them don't have a size, they're out of stock, and we need it right now. So sometimes, spending a few dollars, we just, we'll go ahead and get it from all three of those vendors. So. Need a motion. Huh? Yes, that's what we, yeah, that's what we try to do. On, uh, Plastic Culverts. Need a motion to accept the bids. Commissioner Riddle made a motion. Need a second. Second from Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Number ten is Steel Culverts. Contex. Range Springs. Uh, Mr. Holmes over Gilmer, he said on Steel Culverts and Plastic Culverts. That we purchase those from more than one supplier if you have a need. That they will give us a price at such time. Contex. Steel Culverts. Sixteen gauge. Twelve inch is eight dollars now, went up seventy-five cents. We didn't get a bid from them last year on Steel Cover, that's Holmes' prices. So this is new prices. Contex out of Silver Springs, and, uh, they also sell those, uh, polymer coated.
Yeah, plastic coated.
Plastic coated Steel Culverts. So these are just galvanized, uh, for a sixteen gauge. Twelve inch. Eight dollars a foot. Fifteen inch, nine sixty. Eighteen inch is twelve dollars. Twenty-one inch is thirteen sixty. Twenty-four inch is fifteen twenty. Thirty-six inch is twenty twenty. Forty-eight inch is thirty dollars and forty cents. Sixty inch is forty-four dollars and seventy-two inch is fifty eighty. Yes.
I don't remember what, what it is. Four hundred dollars, I think, delivery charge if, if it's not over a certain amount, I don't remember.
It's a lot cheaper to go get them.
Yeah, that's what I've done in the past.
Usually I need it so bad, I have to.
Gone and picked them up.
Run and go get it, so there's Contex bids. He said, call if you need him, unless this is it right here. Alright. So all I see on that is Contact. On Steel Culverts, we'll make a motion to approve, um, Contact's bid. On Steel. Sixteen gauge culverts. Make a motion with. Commissioner Parker. Second. From Commissioner Riddle, all approve, say aye. Okay. Oh, that's all the, yeah, this is a motion. Okay, so that's a motion. All the motions. So we need aggregate number four, I saw that in here. Span. RK Hall. RK Hall. Tabid grade four is, uh, thirty dollars per ton FOB Sawyer. And then grade four is forty-eight thirty-six per ton delivered. Out of Paris.
Say that one, one more time.
Okay, uh, thirty dollars.
Yeah.
Pick it up at Sawyer. And it's forty-eight thirty-six delivered. How do that, FOB Sawyer?
No, that's.
Worry?
That's, uh, that's where it's at.
That's being Oklahoma.
It's, uh, it's either Oklahoma or Arkansas, I mean, I'm not sure which it is.
Span had a bid on that too, so let me see. Grade four aggregate. They have, uh, delivered forty-three dollars and fifty-six cents a ton. And they also. Number ten Washpee grabbed twenty-four seventy-two a ton delivered, which is. Just savings on that.
Sawyer is.
So do we need to take bids on both of these, and sometimes we might not can get it if we needed it? Or you want to just go with Span?
Well, on the last year's deal, it says whichever is available, accessible and available.
We should just leave it that way. So let's make a motion to accept these bids from Span and RK Hall on the number four aggregate. All approve, say aye. Apparently I'm making a mess of all these bids. Alright, moving on to Flex Base Ash. So only place I know to get that, I think, is Welch. That Fly Ash Direct. Here's their bid. They did bottom ash and fly ash rock, so it would be, uh, just the ash would be the bottom ash. And then, uh, Flex Base. Flex Base Ash. Fly Ash Rock, okay, that's the bid we need. And they sent one anyway for, uh, bottom ash. So, this six dollars per ton.
Bottom ash here?
Yes, we go get that at Welch. And the Fly Ash Rock. Is ten fifty per ton.
Ten fifty.
Just picking it up. So. Item twelve, make a motion, I need a motion to approve the bids. Flex Base Ash. Ash, Fly Ash Rock. From Fly Ash Direct out of Welch Power Plant, Tason. Make a motion from Commissioner Parker, motion. Second. From Commissioner Riddle, all approve, say aye. Aye. Moving on, Flex Base Ash. Who all did that? Span and then Marietta. Do that would be Marietta. Didn't get anything from Marietta.
What have you got there?
Uh, from HE Span.
There's only one?
Marietta, okay. Where'd that be? Maybe we need to contact them. Do you want to try to, let's reach out to them? We can have a phone number or something. Give us the price on it. Gave a good price last year. You want to estimate a minimum and table this till we can find out who's in Marietta Company? On the flexible. Base.
Fifteen dollars what it's showing. Then down under, they've got that same thing, use whichever is accessible and available.
So on this bid for Flex Base. Yeah. You're not going to go to Marietta. Alright. Make a motion, we accept Span's bid. Two inch limestone base, twenty-one fifty per ton delivered. One and a half sandstone base is twenty-five eighty-three. So. Plus twenty dollars and seventy-five cents, now twenty-one fifty. Plus twenty-four fifty-six is up to twenty-five eighty-three per ton delivered. Fly Ash Rock Flex Base is sixteen seventy-five per ton delivered.
Sixteen seventy-five?
Uh-huh.
That's on, yeah, that was up on the, the last.
Yeah, but we need to go get most of that if she goes anywhere. So, make a motion.
That fifteen dollars on that Marietta and on the, the seal coat aggregate up top.
Uh-huh.
That is delivered fro, uh, I meant, uh, that is, that is from their yard. That's from their yard. They don't deliver.
Yeah, quarry.
That's what that, reason that's so much cheaper.
That's why that FOB sawyer is.
Yeah, that's the reason that's so much cheaper.
They don't deliver. Okay.
And we don't have any way of going up there and getting it if we can't cross state land with our trucks, so we're gonna have to.
So let's make a motion on this flex base to accept a, a bid for Span, East Span.
I make that motion.
Commissioner Parker made a motion, Commissioner Riddle, second. All in favor say aye? Aye. Eyes have it. Now we're gonna do. Emulsified asphalt on item fourteen. I don't have these listed. I had them written out by hand. Anyway, here they are, sort, for, uh, CRS two is two dollars and forty cents a gallon if we pick it up, two dollars fifty-five cents a gallon delivered. And CRS two P is two sixty-five a gallon, we pick it up, and two eighty, delivered. The CSS dash one H is two forty a gallon, us picking it up, two fifty-five a gallon delivered. CSS one is two forty a gallon and two fifty-five a gallon delivered, ergon. Have a motion to accept those bids. Emulsified asphalt, make a motion. Motion from Commissioner Applewhite, second. From Commissioner Parker, all in favor say aye? Aye. Aye, eyes have it. Now we have the lawn maintenance contract.
We got one that's, uh, I guess the guy's not blue, it's gonna be three bids, he's not.
Okay, all right, so we need one more bid.
He's got.
He's gonna get it. Okay, and did we get, who did we get in, Stanley's?
Got two of them, I don't know who they're from, one from, uh, Will Banks bid, or the other one's done something.
Okay, all right, so we got two bids, we're waiting on a bid, I make motion, let's make a motion, somebody that we table this till we get another bid in. Motion from Commissioner Applewhite to table this issue, and can I get a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Parker, all in favor say aye? Aye. Eyes have it. All right. Now we're down to item number sixteen, considering possibly approve and purchase a new tractor with a side boom mower through the buy board precinct two. So, I can do some explaining here, we have a side boom tractor that is fifteen years old, it's been through two side boom arms, and we had some bad luck last week, that arm has broken in half for the second time, it's been repaired pretty heavily through the years, and I feel like it's time for me to pull the trigger and buy a new side boom tractor. And what I want to do with the one I have in stock is take the side boom mower off of it, and we can use it for several parts that, that we've replaced, and the joystick and the motor on it for some of our other side booms, for sure. And clean that tractor up and run it through the auction, and try to recoup some money on my new purchase. And I wanted to, uh, give you some prices, the best one I found on the buy board is the New Holland tractor, I priced the John Deere tractors, and they're about twenty thousand dollars higher than this. So at Conroy Tractor, they're gonna go through Alamo, and I'm real happy with the Alamo brand, this is gonna be a fifty-inch cutter head, which will be, hopefully, a little less wear and tear carrying around than that sixty-inch wide one that we've been using for years. It's got a twenty-two foot boom on it, and a New Holland TS six one forty tractor, which is a hundred and thirty-nine horsepower. So buy board price is one hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. And we will get two percent of that back at the end of the year on buy board, which is good. And what I would like to do is, uh, of course, I'll have to wait on this to get built at Alamo in Fort Worth, uh, so it may take a few weeks to get at least, so what I was wanting to propose was to be able to borrow about a hundred thousand dollars now from the general fund at zero interest, that saved me, best note I could find was like three point five was like fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand dollars interest. I'm gonna pay the thirty-five, about thirty-six thousand dollars down on it, and then pay three-year payments on it, finance it for three years. And I'm gonna take that, the money from the tractor, we're estimating it's gonna get about twenty-five thousand, if I'm lucky, it might get thirty, but I'm, I'm gonna be optimistic at twenty to twenty-five thousand that I can pay that back to the general fund directly as soon as it sells, um, and get my notes paid off, but then I'll budget this out for the next three years, so that's what I found. So Carl, what are your ideas on that? Be okay if we can get a, a motion, uh, to buy the tractor precinct two, let me pay it out in three years and borrow a hundred thousand dollars from the general fund? So shortly, I hope it'll just be seventy-five thousand as soon as I sell the tractor, but I might, I might only get eighty, you know, I might only get twenty thousand for the tractor, I'm not sure. So we're gonna try to auction it, I've got it serviced, we just, it's, it's got some issues to it, so it's time to upgrade, regretfully, but just we'll leave it better than we found it. So can I get a motion to buy the equipment and finance it? What's y'all's ideas on that?
Sixteen seventy, yes, that, sixteen seventy.
Oh, so I'm gonna do two different, okay, so number one would be, um, have a motion so I could buy the, uh, side boom tractor through the buy board. Motion from Commissioner Applewhite, second.
Second.
From Commissioner Parker, all in favor say aye? Aye. Eyes have it. And then item seventeen would be to borrow from that general fund, one hundred thousand dollars of the purchase now, and with, uh, understanding that I'm gonna pay back three payments, three-year payments starting next year, and then plus what I get for that tractor that I'm gonna sell in its place, pay that right back to the general fund immediately as soon as it sells at the auction. Get a motion for that. Make a motion from Commissioner Applewhite, and sec, can I get a second? Second from Commissioner Parker, all in favor say aye? Aye. All opposed? Eyes have it. All right, thank you for that, fellas. We'll put it to work for sure. Number eighteen is to approve oil and written reports for county officials. Mr. Carl?
Make a motion, we approve oil and written reports.
Motion from Commissioner Parker. Second. Second from Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor say aye? Aye. Eyes have it. Now we will, number nineteen is approve the treasurer's report. I always like your numbers better than Carl's. Carl trying to hurt your feelings. We get a motion to approve his report.
Make a motion. I'll second whatever.
Motion was made by Applewhite and seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor say aye? Aye. Aye, and the eyes have it. Y'all gotta sign this. Passin' that hutch, got stabbed. Number twenty, approve budget amendments, or we will have some next month, I imagine, so.
Yeah.
All right. Twenty-one, sign pay orders and approve payments.
Make motion, prepare bill.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor say aye? Aye. And eyes have it. Number twenty-two, we have closing comments from commissioners, I'll turn this to Commissioner Riddle. No comments. Me, we've been busy, I'll just say my, my bunch has been busy and we're trucking along. Commissioner Applewhite, do you have anything? Commissioner Parker?
I don't have anything.
All right, we survived this meeting. I make a motion, we close the meeting, adjourn? Seconded by Commissioner Parker, all in favor say aye? Aye. Thank you.